Good morning and welcome to the second monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, united as one with liberty and justice for all.
This is a public meeting of the Board. It is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee to pose a question or make comment on any matter that is on the Board's agenda today. There are copies of the agenda on the table as you come in, as well as a set of the action items that are before the Board. Item number two on the agenda today is approval of minutes from the meeting that was held on August 11th. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? If not, if there's a motion to approve the minutes as presented, so we'll second it. Okay, with that in check. Item number three is first selectman updates. On August 14th, I was very pleased to participate in the annual St. Rock's feast procession through Chickahominy. This is an annual tradition and it pays homage to the church's patron saint, who is actually a Frenchman, who the town of Mora de Santas in Italy has erected a church to him because of his support for them in the sick, who St. Rock and his faithful dog brought food daily to care for those in that town. And so when those folks came here, they erected a church in his honor. And that's the history for which it takes place every early August. Very nice event. They have a new pastor at St. Rock, Pastor Art, I believe it's Wallenberg. Sure I have that right?
Peter, how were they?
Mullen, I'm sorry. I said, well, Arthur Mullenhauer. Very, very gregarious, well-educated individual. He speaks three languages. He speaks German, Italian, and Spanish, and is excited about being able to grow the congregation by doing outreach to our Spanish-speaking population here in Greenwich. So I think it's really a wonderful fit for him.
Yeah. How were they affected by the rains? Didn't it rain like badly to, I mean monetarily? Did it, was it bad?
Oh, I haven't heard the, I haven't heard the results of the, I haven't heard the results of the.
It was like.
Every, every now.
It was unfortunate. The weather was not favorable. But, what did I say? Mullenhauer. Mullenhauer. He is looking to become more integrated into the community and work, you know, with the town to foster fellowship and, and good work. On August 15th, the town took another step forward in the realization of a new community pool at Byram Park with the groundbreaking. We're thankful to the Junior League for their efforts. They have contributed $250,000 to the effort, as well as have a commitment to raise up to $2.5 million to contribute to the costs. There were a number of town officials and former town officials on hand who've been working toward the project, working closely with the town. Certainly want to extend again appreciation and thanks to them, as well as to the town departments who have worked long and hard to ascertain the approvals and go through the bidding processes, get the contractors in place. The contractor for this project is Werner Construction, which is a local company, and they'll be hiring all the various subcontractors to construct the pool. Both last Monday, August 15th, and this Monday, August 22nd, I had the honor of presenting employee recognition certificates and pins for employees who have worked for the town from an interval of five years to 40 years. It was a great experience to really see frontline people many times go unnoticed, who showed up here. We took photos, presented them with a pin. If they were here beyond a certain period, not only they get a certificate, but they got a mug with the number of years of service. And everything from the police department to Public Works, to Parks, to Witherell, to the library, every facet of government had someone who's been in the line of service within those periods. One of the people, well, there are two people who have 40 years of service. One of them is Larry Dower, who's in our Public Works, and the other is Angela Vinci, who is in the Board of Education Finance Office. And I happen to know Angela since I was seven years old, because she worked closely with my dad when he was working for the town. And she started here, I think she said, when she was 19.
How long did your dad work here?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years?
Yeah. So, and we also had our own employee, Paula Belmont, celebrate 35 years of service to the town. So you'll hear more about this on September 16th, when we have a luncheon and ceremony for all the folks. But I think it's a testament to the organization in terms of the longevity and the commitment and the quality of service that's provided by the organization.
Did you get an invitation?
I also want to share with, with my colleagues in the public, a letter I received from, from a woman who wrote to me about a positive experience she had with the Greenwich Police Department. And she writes, "This past Tuesday, my much older sister was supposed to visit me from Baltimore. She never arrived and no one heard from her. She was found in a very out-of-the-way part of Pennsylvania yesterday afternoon with obvious cognitive issues that I was unaware of. Not knowing what to do, I began by calling the Greenwich Police. I am still emotional when I think about the time, extra effort and attention that the Greenwich detectives Sean Walsh and Luke Kelly put into helping to find my sister." Though Baltimore Police were supposed to take the lead, it was always Greenwich, it was always Greenwich that found any updates and looked into options. In addition, they never lost their patience. Detective Kelly gave me his cellphone, spoke to the police in New Jersey where she had been seen, talked to the police where she grew up. Please let me know if there's anything further I can do to thank these incredible detectives." So I share that because it's nice when we get affirmation on the part of our residents of the good work that our people do. And oftentimes, they do this day in and day out, and it goes unnoticed. So I just want to, again, share positive experience. And I intentionally left the individual's name off because of the situation. I think it's, it's only appropriate to do so that, Luke Kelly, if I have that right. Where is it? And Sean Walsh, just want to make sure.
They're actually officers, but they weren't controlled with the police. So they did that on their normal patrol time.
Oh, thank you. So as a point of, that was done on their normal patrol time?
Patrol and the shift supervisor gave them all the time.
And they were supported by the shift supervisor, who gave them that latitude to devote the time and attention to helping this resident. So thank you very much.
That's great.
Also want to, as an update, recognize an event that took place far from our shores, but a delegation of our citizens traveled to Italy this past month, earlier this month, for the purpose of continuing the partnership that was established several years ago with the city of Rosa Cosens, where a number of Italian, a large number of Italian immigrants emanated from. And Bea Crumbine, who's the town's ambassador-at-large, headed the delegation that went, as well as our town tax collector, Todd Ladonia, and his family also went, because he is president of the St. Lawrence Club, and St. Lawrence is the patron saint of Rose. What is notable is that without the efforts of Bea Crumbine, none of this would have taken place. This all began when Bea came to my office several years ago at my request to help me interpret for one of the mayors that was here from another town. The long story short, we all know she fostered this relationship, developed the issue. She was responsible for the whole Historical Society exhibition from Italy to America. She fostered the relationship not only with Rose, but with Mora de Santas, which is the community that ties to St. Rock's. Well, Rose is so thankful for Bea's contributions and recognition that upon her arrival, she received a quite regal welcome with a police escort up to the town hall. In fact, we're trying to figure out how to get their video up on Vimeo or YouTube. Barbara is working through that. But we watched it and it was quite impressive to see. She was named the only honorary citizen of Rose, Italy. And so I have the article here from their paper, and I laminated it, but it shows her with the mayor. And so she's the only honorary citizen of that town. And it's important to note Bea has no Italian ancestry, but she lived in Italy and has studied the language, knows the language fluently, and has really established a wonderful relationship and acknowledgement for all the residents here. So at some point, she will be before us to give a little bit more in depth. And I also want to point out that I want us to develop a way to, to recognize her and thank her for her contribution to the community and the residents here who relate, which Mr. Marzullo is another descendant of a family who has ties to Rose. And they sent you and I tokens of appreciation gifts from there.
That's nice. That's wonderful.
Finally.
I think that's great.
Despite the rains, we have been in close contact in coordination with Aquaria and Water Company with regard to our wet reservoir levels. We are encouraging water conservation to continue, considering that the levels are now below 50, I think there was 56 percent. We encourage people to add compost to their soil, use mulch to help maintain garden moisture, only water gardens when needed, water lawns only when needed. Do make sure you know how to manually control your irrigation system. It's a big one. Do make sure you are watering the lawn and not the sidewalk or the street. And, you know, just common sense application of conservation measures. We are monitoring, as I said, with our conservation director and our water supply team. And Ms. Hines was in the last meeting with representatives and has been following it. Also, next Wednesday at 2:00 PM is the first meeting of the Board of Selectmen's Charter, BOE Charter Revision Committee. It's going to be held in the Cone Room. Essentially, it's an organizational meeting. The agenda will consist of calling the meeting to order. Having the group should establish a chair, a secretary to keep notes, and then review what their charge is. And then ultimately, it's handed off to them. They have to come up with the schedule of meeting dates. So that's where it transfers from really us to them, 2:00 PM. And so that's, that's the agenda, basically, for the first meeting. And then any materials, I know that you had Drew given some materials with links to the different towns. We have the presentation we had done in 2015. They're going to be provided that, but ultimately, their charge is to look at the question that was brought before us and any other pertinent application to that. So that's next Wednesday at 2:00. And we have also requested that, in terms of communication, that the Board of Ed add this to their website, so that people looking for this can find the information. Again, this is the inaugural meeting, so it's just going to be prefaced on introductions, assignment of chair and secretary, and then the charge and schedule of future meetings. So. Was there any other meeting? Was there another meeting in addition to that one we were gonna, oh. So we're gonna, we're gonna be moving into our business section. We have no old business. And we're here today to talk about Veterans Day, but I do want to just preface that by telling you that there's been a lot of discussion over the last several weeks internally about coordinating not only Veterans Day, but what comes before that is the September 11th Remembrance Ceremony. And so it has been confirmed that the September 11th Remembrance Ceremony will take place on September 11th, beginning at 5:00 PM at the Cosco Park. The organization for this event is transferring from Mr. Hughes, who has been a stalwart in bringing everybody together in emceeing this affair, to a representative from the Memorial Committee. And so it's a year of transition, and it's also going to take on perhaps a different, different presentation with a more focus, perhaps exclusively on the families of those who lost folks. What we've, what we've come to appreciate is that with the establishment of the memorial, many of the families view this location as a gravesite. And so many are appreciative of what the town has done to hold this every year, but are looking for a degree of subtlety versus pomp, I guess is the best way to put it. I do understand also that, and I don't want to, it's not up to me to release it, but I believe there's going to be a pre-ceremony or a prior ceremony to that one for first responders. And I think that may be taking place down in Glenville, but more to come. But I just want, I know, Robert, you're here from the Greenwich Time, and for those listening, there will be a ceremony. It's at 5:00 on the 11th at Cosco Park. That's the key point. So that's a nice way to segue into the next item, which is Veterans Day. And we're here today to review with the Greenwich Police and with Mr. Winningham, who is with the Greenwich Community Covenant of Care, that it was established to support and not just honor veterans, but support veterans. And on Veterans Day, the town has had a long-established tradition of holding a ceremony in front of the old post office. It was held by the American Legion or organized by the American Legion. Over the last several years, we have combined that ceremony with the Greenwich Community Covenant of Care's Walk. Last year, as you may recall, the focus of the Walk was on Vietnam veterans. This year, it is going to be focused on disabled veterans. But I point out that the ceremony will take place, and what we're going to be hearing about today is really the, the entire day, which will start with the Walk, will, will proceed from the Walk down to the World War II Memorial. There'll be some words spoken. Then we will transition over to the annual ceremony honoring our veterans. And upon the conclusion of that, the Redmond Home Association on Elm Street is hosting a lunch for veterans, primarily it's for the veterans themselves, which they have desire to bring in some entertainment. I believe they're contracting with the USO Girls to come and sing for the veterans. So what we're focusing on today is an element of that event. And we have, I always want to say Sergeant Trent, and I promote, I always promote you, Traffic Technician Trent, Roger Trent from the Greenwich Police Department, who's here to review with us the traffic coordination that is required in order to make this ceremony a reality. And the key thing is the ceremony is transitioning from in front of the post office, as I understand, to in front of the war memorial, in front of the Board of Education, thereby necessitating the road closure that enables people to congregate. So you could explain it better than I did.
In the past, we've had two different venues.
The board has one more, one more, one more, one more, one more, one more, one more.
All right. In the past, we've always had the, back as far as I can remember, we did the Honor Guard going down to the World War II Memorial, which is, as I'm upside down now. Here's the senior center. So we have Greenwich Avenue between Bruce Place and Arch Street. The Memorial, World War II Memorial is here. So what we do is we block that off. The other part, the American Legion one, which I believe they had, was down at the old post office. The problem with that, with the two of those, for the first one, all we have to do is bring, we'll have, they'll both start, since they're going together, we'll start at Amagerone, as you all have the paperwork there. We'll do a rolling roadblock where we'll stop traffic, let them come on to Greenwich Avenue. As we come down, we'll stop the side streets and open traffic behind them on the side streets until we get down to the memorial between Bruce Place and Havemeyer. We will then close the road here, let them have their 20-minute ceremony and all the, all the words that are spoken. We will divert traffic around on Bruce Place, bring it back out to Havemeyer. We'll have a traffic officer here at Greenwich Avenue and another one at Havemeyer. We will talk to the people doing the construction, obviously, to get their vehicles off the road for a little while. And we'll bring them around until they're ready to be done. Once they're done, we'll open the roadway back up. They'll all make their way back up on foot, using sidewalks, and then go back up to the Redmond Hall for their after-party. That's our recommendation for Plan A. Plan B, when encompassed, going back to hardware restoration. And now we're down south of Arch Street. Now we'd have to close the road from Arch Street down to Fawcett Place. That has a larger impact because there's 500 people coming. So with the 500 people, now you're going to have to close more of the roadway there, which now has a larger impact on the business community. Up here, the only thing that's actually affected would be the senior center and the Board of Education lot, which they're used to that anyway, because there's less people going in and out, and they can still get in their driveways. Down here, the businesses, once you get down south of Arch Street, the businesses are going to be affected because the road will be closed, so people can't come in. They'll be able to go out, obviously. So the police department and traffic's recommendation is to do Plan A at the War Memorial.
Great. Does anyone have a question?
No.
No, I think that's very, we're thankful for the graphic. Thank you. Bruce Winningham, welcome. You're here today to support our approval and perhaps give a little context to the ceremony.
Sure. This is the fourth year. And so I have four quick points. First, it's Friday, November 11th, so it's a workday. And we've had experience with both weekend and, and workday. We found a way to combine the ceremonies of, of the American Legion and the Greenwich Military Covenant of Care into one ceremony that'll be overseen by the American Legion, which was actually the vision all along. It's just that no one had imagined how many people would come to the Walk, which sort of created a spontaneous second ceremony that we're more than happy to, to have run by the American Legion. So the combination of those two is, is the appropriate thing to do and something we had imagined all along. Thirdly, the first year theme was to bring together veterans who have fought in this war and introduce them to men and women who had fought in the previous wars. The second year's theme was to recognize the 25 living combat battlefield veterans of World War II that still live among us, most unheralded and unknown. Last year was the 50th anniversary of the, of the ramp up of the severity of Vietnam War. And all of us carry inside us a palpable realization that they were not fully respected when they returned, and they didn't receive a full welcome home. So we found 60 men who, unlike me, who were in the military in Vietnam, but not in Vietnam. We found 60 men inside the battlefields and honored them and said, "Welcome home." Despite a rainy day, we still had 350 people come to do that. This year, we're directing the town's attention to disabled veterans of this current or any war, because they aren't noticed and they aren't recognized, and then they soldier on with a lifetime of disability. We're working with the Disabled American Veterans Association. Its chapter in Fairfield County, which will be here with us. They'll work with our own town Department of Social Services in a combined way to create something appropriate, something that, that gives due recognition, that has the right language and the right action on the part of the town. Four things to share with you folks respectfully. In 2009, there were 900,000 medical claims processed by the VA for veterans. That's 900,000. This year, it's 1.4 million. In 2009, the number of diagnoses that was processed for veterans in the VA was 2.7 million. This year, it's 5.9 million, so a doubling of the number of diagnoses. In 2009, the degree of severity of disability, how much are you from normal, the average disability in 2009 was 30% disabled. The average disability now among veterans processed by the VA is 50% lost capacity. Finally, the percent of.
Is that because they're getting older, or is that because, is it the same, or is increasing the amount of people that are making claims?
It is a very astute question that is borne out in the fourth fact, which is to say that the percent of veterans who are disabled has gone up in 10 years from 9% to 19%. Part of that is the aging of Vietnam veterans that were more wounded. I mean, the reality is, most people wounded in World War II didn't get home. There was no medical care. There's no way to get them off those islands. Whereas there's a higher survival rate of wounded Vietnam veterans, and they're now aging, and more circumstances are arising as they age. But it also is the higher number of people in this war who also were removed from the battlefield quickly, taken to medical care in the airbases around Afghanistan and Iraq, flown to hospitals in Germany for surgery within six hours. So there's a much more survival rate of wounded combatants in this war also. So it's the combination of those two demographic factors. Finally, the American Legion, I think, is, has gracefully joined with us to create one ceremony. And through a new organization called the Greenwich Veterans Council, we found a way to collaborate and communicate that was, I believe, created by Mr. Tessie, and thus has enabled us to, to have a greater effect in working together. The first example of that was, we planned Memorial Day within this council and dramatically increased the participation at all the different locations within the town that day. So we are even more hopeful of increasing total town participation in Veterans Day.
We're excited, and thank you for your steadfast support of the veterans. And important to note, you know, we're focused today on making sure we have the best ceremony highlighting a specific topic. But the organization that you're now part of is really focused on supporting veterans 365 days out of the year in terms of just coordination of entities that are already doing good things for veterans, but perhaps people are not aware. And I think that was really the impetus. We do have a fellow who works in our Social Services Department who is available to do the administrative intake and direction for those who need medical or economic, George O'Laughlin. So I'm glad that you're now part of it, and we've got everybody working together. As, everybody's been working, but it makes it easier. Many hands make light work. And I think that's the impetus. So thank you very much, Bruce.
Thank you. And we're grateful for the creation of that town collaboration.
So at this time, we just need a motion to approve, approve the recommended parade traffic plan, which was Plan A.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Plan A, which closes the avenue at Bruce Place and opens it back up at Havemeyer Place for the ceremony to be held in front of the Board of Education meeting.
It's been moved by Mr. Toner, seconded by Mr. Marzullo. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Traffic Technician Trent, thank you very much.
Would you have a vote?
Yes, appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, appointments and nominations. We have had a couple of openings on the historic We have had a couple of openings on the Historic District Commission with the recent retirement of Mr. Hall. And so, at this time, I'd like to move the elevation of one of the alternates who's, who served for some time, Daris Torabee, to the term that expires 3/31/2019. That's Daris, D-A-R-I-U-S, Torabee, T-O-R-B-A-Y. Mr. Torabee lives on Strickland Road in the Strickland Road Historic District, has been very active, and he's affiliated as a Democrat, so we could balance the... Is there a second?
There's a second.
Seconded by Mr. Marzullo. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, I believe we have to verify, we might still have an opening, and we've got, let's see. Leslie Klein. That's all I have for today, that I can accurately...
Really, the snack committee beats on the night, I think.
Yeah. This is one that if I could get some help, perhaps to, we can reconcile this. I have some paperwork in my office, but maybe I could work with one of you on, so we can get this done, because I think what their concern is, is they're not going to have enough people if we don't fill. Because I think there, there's one, two, three, four. This would give them five, but that means everybody has to show up. And, I mean, we may have like three openings. So, we have two names here, but we have to just confirm, you know, meet. So, we could do that, because we're, the cutoff for the RTM, I think, is tomorrow. So, we could get Mr. Torabee on, and then finish that. Okay, that concludes appointments and nominations. Executive session, I believe we have just one item today, and that was a property tax settlement. So, at this time, if we can go into executive session just to review that, and then if we take action on it, which is likely, we will come out and vote, and we'll invite you to come back in. So, is there a motion to go into executive session? So, we'll...
Second.
Sorry.